With me.
Our intrepid vice president steps to the fore, steps into the breach.
We are now live and the meeting is being recorded. So if you wouldn't mind Chair Bougainhagen repeating that.
Okay. I'm sorry if I was too early on it. Andrea Bobbitt, our chair, is unable to attend tonight, and I'm Terry Bougainhagen, the vice chair, and I will be chairing the meeting tonight. What I'd like to do is to go ahead and ask for a roll call to start off to make sure that we have a quorum. I can count noses, but let's go ahead and record it. Who's gonna do that? John or Megan? Megan? Okay, go ahead, Megan.
Thank you. Andrew Commissioner Chair Bobbitt is not here, so for the record. Vice Chair Bougainhagen?
Yes. I'm here.
Commissioner Stratten?
Here.
Commissioner Utler? Appears absent. Commissioner Spolnick?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Kier?
Here.
Commissioner Fox?
Here.
Thank you. And that's it. Thank you all.
Liz, welcome to our little meeting of commissioners. I understand this is your first attendance, and I want to welcome you. And can you give me and the others a little bit of where you live and what's your interest in the planning commission?
Um, I am out in Hidden Valley, kind of a little bit closer to Newport than to Toledo physically as the crows fly, but I've been interested in the planning commission. I actually have been a land use planner in the past, many, 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 many years ago, 30 years ago. And before that, I was actually a planning commissioner in Clatsop County right after I first got married. So yeah, it's it's kind of nice to come back and look at all the things that are going on and feel like I'm in the loop again. I appreciate the opportunity.
Welcome. We're glad to have you. I'd like to start by convening this hearing. And this is for the January 10th, 2022 meeting of the Lincoln County Planning Commission. It's seven o'clock. We've called the roll. And we'd like to go ahead and get started. And I understand Jerry, you would like to give us a little bit of your wisdom before we get started.
Thank you very much, Chair. I appreciate it. And Liz, I think maybe we've crossed paths here before, but I am Assistant County Counsel, and I'm here. I generally attend the meetings and offer legal advice, try to answer your questions. So this evening and today, I took a look at the materials that had been submitted, and I saw that there was a letter from Kim and Marcy Martin. It's in the record. I think you all probably have reviewed it. In a couple of places, it talks about that this expansion, the expansion decision should be postponed, or there should be a postponing until further study can be done and so on. I interpreted that to mean a request to either leave the record open or to continue the hearing. And ORS 197 763 provides guidance on that issue. And basically, if someone requests that the record be left open or that the matter be continued, then we must honor that. So what that means is is that I'm going to ask the board, this planning commission, not to make a decision on the matter. We'll go ahead and have the hearing. And toward the end, I think we can figure out whether or not we're going to leave the record open, which is one concept which we usually do, or continue the matter. And we could probably make that call depending upon what sort of shakes out today. And so basically, what this says is 197 763, prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, that's what we're doing today. Any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The local hearings authority shall shall grant the request. So that's what I was talking about. By continuing the public hearing pursuant to paragraph B below, or leaving the record open, which is paragraph C. And we can talk about those differences later. So I just wanted to say, yes, planning commission, we're going to take in the evidence tonight, but we are not going to make a decision tonight. And if you have any questions about this, I'm here to answer questions, and I appreciate all of your work. I know that it's it can be a lot of work being a planning commission member. You do a lot of good for the community. And and for me, from my perspective, just thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. I'd like to go to one other item. Before we get into the the program for tonight. Is there any public comment that may be in this meeting that is not on the agenda? Now, this is the time to speak up and present your concern to the planning commission at this time.
Commissioner Bougainhagen, Chair Bougainhagen, if I may, since we are in an electronic meeting, if if I can, I'd like to ask, there's six attendees in in the meeting tonight. In Zoom, there's a raise hand function. So if any of those attendees that are listening tonight, if they have any public comment, as the commissioner, as the chair said, outside of the the matter at hand, go ahead and click that raise hand button now or as quickly as possible, and we'll come back to you. At at this time, I'm not seeing any. But if you want to give that a second, we'll see if anybody does that. And just let you know. I'm not seeing it. So it looks like it's like everybody's probably here for the one topic, so.
Well, that's good. That will lead us into the next part of the the evening. For the record, tonight, we are holding a live virtual or electronic public hearing on case file 14C PC dash 21. To consider a request by the Schooner Creek Transfer Incorporated, Laun French Agent, for a conditional use permit to expand the operating characteristics in hours of operation of the existing solid waste transfer station known as Schooner Creek Transfer Station on the property's own IP planned industrial. Further, the applicant is proposing construction of a new 35-foot-tall, approximately 1,400-square-foot steel transfer building with an 80-square-foot office. Widening of the existing approach road at 246 South Anderson Creek Road to accommodate a 24-foot-wide self-hall route. 12-foot-wide self-hall route inbound and 12-foot self-hall route outbound. And installation of a gate, the installation of inbound and outbound scale house and scale, and construction of a stormwater facility to accommodate additional impervious service surfaces, excuse me, surfaces. Construction of approximately 1,600 and 16,800 square foot of asphalt paving. This is the impervious surface that was talked about adjacent to the new building. That is proposed development of the self-hall scale path, construction of a bunker and hardscape for inert gravel and dirt disposal, and development of a trailer storage area for two trailers approximately 300 feet by 60, excuse me, 30 feet by 60 feet. The applicant is also requesting to expand the existing permitted operating hours for the transfer station from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Saturday to 5:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Saturday. For this particular applicant, the applicable criteria that is being considered. This is from chapter one of the Lincoln County Code, and from the Oregon Administrative Rules, OARS, are applicable to this request. First one is section 1 dot 1364 IP, a planned industrial zone. The second from the code is section 1 dot 1415 off-street parking and off-street loading requirements. The third is section 1 dot 1630, parentheses, one in parentheses, standards and procedures governing conditional uses and general standards. And then section 1 dot 1630, paragraph parentheses, 11 in parentheses, standards and procedures governing conditional uses, standards for solid waste transfer stations. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the criteria just described, or other criteria in the plan or the land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Further, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba based upon that issue. At this time, I would ask the planning commissioners, myself included, to disclose any ex parte communications or any bias of conflicts or interest of interest regarding this application.
I need to state. Yeah, I need to state that 30 years I was actually on the planning staff when this application first came in, but I don't feel I have any bias towards it at all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Anybody else that has a disclosure to make? Okay, we have received, and John, you may have to help me out here, or Megan, there are two correspondences that have come into the office regarding this particular item. I thought I had them organized here. I guess I don't. The one of them came in this morning from the Lori and Time Hyberg, if I got it right, and also from Kim and Marcy Martin. And it is posted now on the county planning commission's website. For those of you who would like to review it or become more familiar with it. The other one, see if I get it right. I guess I'm not going to get it right. I thought I printed it out.
Is it Wojcik? The
Yes.
They can correct our pronunciation if we've got it wrong, but.
Now, that came in a couple of weeks ago, and it is also posted on the commission's and planning department's website for your review. That's the only two that I know of. John or Megan, do you have anything to add to that?
Okay. Megan, you got.
I'm sorry. Besides those three letters of opposition, we did not receive any other written testimony, Chair Bougainhagen.
Okay, thank you. Who's going to talk about the staff report? Staff?
I I will. I I wrote the staff report and but.
Anno, before you start.
Oh, please.
We have a raised hand from an attendee. Mr. Craig Wojcik. Jerry, is this the time where I would have to unmute or should it be?
Um, so if there's a raised hand, why don't you go ahead and find out what the concern is? And just.
And I don't see those raised hands, so.
Yeah.
It's Wojcik. Okay, here we go.
Yeah.
Mr. Wojcik.
Please go ahead.
Can unmute yourself if you have a question?
Craig, you might be on mute.
Yeah, Craig, we're hoping you can figure out how to use, if you've raised your hands and want to say something now, that we're hoping that you can. Okay, so we're hearing from Ken Martin, all panelists as a participant. We do not see an unmute button.
Um, as an attendee, you don't have the unmute option until you're promoted to a panelist, and I just promoted Craig and asked him to unmute. So, Mr. Martin, that's why. We're not taking public testimony yet. We're just asking Mr. Wojcik what his question was before Anno gets a staff report.
Because there is going to be time, of course. You know, the way these things work is that I give a staff report, then the applicant gets an opportunity to speak. Any any supporters get to speak. Then the opponents, if there are opponents, then they get to speak. And so that's that's the that's the normal order of things, so.
I've asked Mr. Wojcik to unmute, but I don't, there must be a problem on his end. If you wouldn't mind.
I still see he's muted, so.
Yeah.
I've asked him to unmute, and that doesn't seem to be working. So maybe, sir, you could type your question into the chat.
Yeah. And again, this is Jerry here, which is the council. The thing I don't, everyone, don't panic about anything, you know, this technology has worked before for us. There could be some glitches, but the point is, is that everyone, and I mean, everyone, will get a chance to present testimony, and indeed tonight will not be the final get together on this, so that even after today, if you have additional material you want the planning commission to know about, you think might be helpful for the planning commission to make their decision, you will have that opportunity. So opportunities abound both tonight and beyond. And as as Anno had stated, there is an ordered procedure. Everyone gets their chance, but there is, the applicant has the burden of proof. So the applicant is going to go first after the staff report. And and testimony will be taken up. The chair will let you know when it's time. And and so that's how it works.
So there's nothing in the chat then, right, from Craig? Do.
I don't see anything.
Okay.
I just see a raised hand, and his microphone is still muted. Craig, if you can hear me, your microphone is shown on the bottom of your screen in the lower tray or dock, depending on the type of equipment you're using. You need to click on it if it has a hash on it. Okay. Why don't we just go ahead and if I see that Craig is able to speak at some point in time, I'll acknowledge that. And Anno, the Director of Planning, why don't you start out with the staff report?
Okay, so just so Megan, are we are we going to put Craig outside? He's no longer a panelist, is just trying to keep track of the how you're doing the.
Yeah, I saw that his, I believe his Pam Wojcik, I presume his wife also raised her hand momentarily, so I'm just going to see if she has the opportunity to. Oh, here we go. He unmuted, it looks like.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Hi, we can hear you. Did you have a question, sir?
Hey.
Pam and Craig.
All of your voices. I don't know what's going on, but your voices are stopping and starting, stopping and starting. Maybe maybe you're just not close enough to the mic or something.
How is your bandwidth? Because it it sounds much more of a whoa.
Well, I'm, I've got a good bandwidth here, and I got a brand new, pretty good phone, so can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I just.
Yes, you're coming in good.
Okay. All right, so I I think maybe who, some of you are not getting close enough to the mic or something that the at least I'm getting, the voice is broken up, stopping and starting. So I'll shut up until you tell me it's time to speak.
Okay, I just received the note from the French's, Lon and and yeah, it'll come to me. Mr. and Mrs. Finch, that they're able to hear everybody fine.
Can you?
Okay.
Let me. Come here.
Okay.
I'm trying to get.
Okay.
I disappeared for a minute, and I managed to come back in. So whatever that was, if I if I click something, then whatever, but I'm Mr. Chair, you're ready to receive my staff report, right?
Let's go ahead with it, please.
And unlike the last time with Goal 18, this is going to be very, very short, because I really think the applicants need to be primarily the ones to describe the nature of what they're doing. And there are there, you know, as you know, this is a conditional use application. And for the good of the order, let let me, I always do this a lot of times with people calling in if 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 a land use is a conditional use, I like to go through this quick explanation, right? It goes like this. In our world and and under our code, there are three types of land use. One is an outright permitted use, which means there is no land use planning process. If it's owned residential, someone just takes out a building permit and builds a house after submitting permits. The other, the other end of the spectrum is you don't get to do it at all. It's not, it's a prohibited use in effect. And in between are conditional uses, which are discretionary land use approvals, which are maybes. And that's why we're having this hearing tonight. Many conditional uses, if they're of a routine nature, well, we will work with an applicant to approve them administratively, and they only come to the planning commission upon appeal. But under the code, the the code gives the option to the planning director. If if a an application has more than very routine significance, it's it's our option to take it directly to the planning commission. And so that's what we opted to do. There's there is no staff recommendation or approval. This is not an appeal. So it's this this conditional use permit is coming directly to you. And so again, as you noted, as you with the staff report, issues related to, so in a conditional use. And and let's understand that the transfer station is already operating, and Liz talked about this, what the first the first conditional use that the trans that the transfer station achieved was many, many years ago. And then Commissioner Spolnick, I remember being on the planning commission with you during, I think it was the maybe the last conditional use that they was a change in opera, you know, there were things that that the transfer station were doing that were different. So there was another conditional use process that came before us. I was on the planning commission at the time. So in the spirit of full disclosure, I've I was on the planning commission during the second of the conditional uses that that came forward. I remember that I remember that very well. And so tonight, and it's laid out in the staff report. You know, this obviously, this is an important facility of transfer stations for for the for North Lincoln County. But the the the, under the code, the responsibility that you have is to examine what's being proposed and ask the fundamental questions, whether that's compatible. And the other follow-up questions from that are if can the uses be rendered compatible? Either as proposed, it's either compatible or not, or are can they be conditioned in a way that makes the use compatible that would attract a yes vote from you? So you, in in this, in this circumstance, as you know, some of you from having done this quite a number of times, you are afforded quite a bit of discretion as planning commissioners to among yourselves potentially outline things that you like or you don't like, or you think that would you know, I think you're the task that that we have tonight, you have tonight, is listening to what the folks hope to do at the transfer station. Listen to the to the neighbors and what their concerns are and and try to bring all that together potentially in in a set of conditions or understandings. And again, you're not going to be voting tonight. But when you're taking testimony, I think that's really, and I put that in the staff report, that that's that's really the meat and potatoes of the exercise that you're doing tonight is to hear, is to understand how the 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 transfer station operates now, what they hope to do, and what the impacts are on other folks, and and how potentially that can all be brought together in a way that as the applicants hope would attract a positive outcome for for some of the things that they want to do with the transfer station. So Mr. Chairman, even in your introduction, you 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 laid out a number of the key items of of what the transfer, what the transfer station hopes to accomplish with the you know, the the proposed changes are the a 14,000-square-foot steel transfer building with an 80-square-foot office. The caretaker's residence will, that's a manufactured home, will go away. They'll widen the additional approach on South Anderson Creek Road. Bill, if if there is a positive vote from the planning commission at one point in this process, then they will work with our Public Works Department to outline exactly what that is. So that's how that would be taken care of. And they will create a paved parking area to the east of the proposed outbound scale house. Additional, an additional 16,000 square foot, 800 square foot of asphalt paving. And stormwater flows will go into an existing stormwater treatment facility on the property. And again, is there is there will be a bunker, as as the chair pointed out, and hardscape for inert gravel and dirt disposal, and trailer storage for two trailers. They are also asking for a change in hours from Monday through Saturday. The current hours are Monday through Saturday at 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. They are requesting a change of hours that would be from 5:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Monday through Saturday. So I I don't think there's really much more that I have to say tonight. Let Mr. Chair, I unless people have or members of the planning commission have questions for me, they've read the staff report or any about the, anything about the process tonight. Because I'm inclined to to move this to the applicants to let them explain for themselves what, why they need to do what they're trying to do, and why they've proposed doing what they are proposing to do. As as the, we've noted before, they'll give the first presentation. Any anybody that's also signed up to be in favor of the application would be invited to testify after they testify. So once I'm done, and once you've asked questions of me, then, Mr. Chair, then we would move to the applicant's testimony. So if there are any questions for me, I now you, of course, you can ask them later in the hearing, too, but unless there are any more, unless there are any questions for me at this point, I will, Shailen, I can see you're, you've got a question, and Scarlett after that, please go ahead.
The application that they filed specifically said they were not requesting a change in hours. And yet, the staff report indicated that they have requested that. Where did that request come from?
Um, well, it came from them, and I noticed, and and I'm just in the papers, all that have all gone back and forth, and 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 we can certainly, as soon as the app. Certainly, as soon as the applicants testify, let's, let's get the clarification from them about what they're seeking, but. But I noticed in the first application form that they sent that. It didn't ask for hours and then did ask for hours, but then there was a, a follow-up. Uh, Lon French applicant, uh, submitted a, a, a final document to us that did ask for those hour changes, so. I think they are asking for the changes in the hours, but, uh. Commissioner Strat, let's, let's make sure we hear it directly from the horse's mouth when they testify in a minute about what they have in mind, so we.
Okay, thank you.
We're not getting, cause that's a, obviously, that's a pretty, pretty critical thing. And, uh, Scarlett, you were, had a question, and then, then Commissioner Spolnik, I'll be happy to answer your question.
Yes, I was, uh, wanting to know if the access permit was required. If that was determined.
For the road access? Yeah, that will, the, how that would be handled is. Um, cause I, I went ahead and I did the consultation with our public works department, cause South Anderson Creek Road is a county facility, so they would be the. It's not ODOT, so they would be our, our county road department would be the, would be the agency that would authorize. The, uh, that, the access permit. And, uh, so that the approach that, that the, uh, our road department had, that communicated back to us in the staff report is that. If you vote, uh, for the changes in the facilities, and if there is a conditional use, we would build that in as a condition of approval. That you ultimately have to get an access permit from our road department, so at that point in time. They would, uh, be, before they could build the facility, they'll have to secure an access permit from our road department. And they would work out the details together, the, the applicants in our road department about what, about that entrance. So that's how that works.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Spolnik.
Yeah, ha- has there been any complaints about this facility since we approved it in two thousand eight?
Well, ye- yes, that there have been, in fact, in your packet. Um, well, not to, not really to us. And, and I'm glad you said something because I, I don't. Phil, do you, way back when, the, and I was on the planning commission at the time, I, I. And I, I was reminded of this when I started working with the applicants and when I became director. I would get these notifications from the transfer facility that we had these, we had another required meeting. And nobody came. And so there, what we did years ago, and I still said we, because we were both on the planning commission at the time. Because there were concerns from neighbors then, there was a requirement to have these occasional meetings that they would sit down with the transfer station folks. And, uh, and engage them about what, whatever what was going on. It's been represented to me by the, by the, uh, by Lon and Tina French that really. That nobody's been attending those meetings, so those have been meetings that nobody has showed up to. But obviously, what we learned in the packet today is that there have been issues. And that, and they've provided them in writing to the transfer station, but, um. But we have, I've not been privy to them until this afternoon or, and, uh, so again, I, I would invite you to. To, to, to read what they've submit, and again, we're kind of a, kind of at a disadvantage here because I, I was trying to absorb some of the stuff. This afternoon, which is, to me, just another good reason to not try to vote tonight, and so, so we can sort of absorb these materials. And, and also give the folks from the transfer station an opportunity to respond. To the, to the back and forth that they've had with, with their neighbors.
Well, yeah, I, but I, I was asking specifically if there's been any complaints to the planning department on this facility. I re, I read the, uh, I read the other stuff, but, so there hasn't been any complaints directly to the planning.
You know, and. I'm doing this really from memory, but, and. I might have, you know, eight or nine years ago, Mr. Wojcik might have called me, I'm, and if he remembers, I'd be welcome, I, I'd, you know, be. Really pleased to hear that, but, you know, it's, it's been really silent, you know, from. And in fact, the, the, the folks from the transfer station had sort of talked with me earlier about trying to eliminate. The, uh, this, this, these meetings because nobody's coming to them, and obviously, the, the neighbors that have had issues, they've communicated directly to the. Transfer station over time and they've had their own dialogue. Um, and in fact, if, if there ultimately is a, a yes vote down the road. In this process to go forward, I, I personally would, would recommend. That the existing conditional use, with the new conditional uses, that we don't have. That kind of a meeting situation because. Now that I've been doing this, you know, now that I'm not just a planning commissioner, but I've, I've been the planning director for nearly ten years. I have a much better understanding that I want to be able to, and our staff, we've talked about this internally, we want to make sure that we, if there are. And, and we've said this before in meetings with other people that are, been going through a conditional use process, that. If you get a conditional use and if you're not following it, and if people complain about it. The, they should complain to us as staff, and if we, and if, as a staff, if we believe that there's merit to the complaints. Under our code, and, and Lord knows this hasn't happened in my memory, but it, but it's a possibility, if someone's. If someone is really violating their conditional use and not doing what they were supposed to do. The remedy is to take that, the matter to the planning commission because you have the authority to revoke a conditional use. And so in this case, I, and, and going forward anyway, I just think it's, it's important for people to understand that if there's. In addition to a dialogue that they would have with a facility like this, they, they need to know that they need to let us know. If, if there are things that, if there are obligations that the facility has to, to do certain things, to operate. At certain hours or don't do this or do this, that they, they're obligated to do it. And so I think that's an important thing going forward here irrespective, is that. The, the surest way to make sure we can all probably get things worked out. Is, is for people, if there, if, if there are problems with the facility, yes, reach out to the facility, but also reach out to us, so that we're all. You know, we're all understanding what's going on because what, what I'm also sensing here based on the, these. The information that we received late in the game, is that there, there, there's friction and, and a facility like this is. Is likely to create some frictions because there's, there's traffic and noise and things going on, so it's not like anybody's shocked about that, but I. I just, for the, for the purposes of going forward, um, I think people should really understand if somebody else is, if somebody's operating under a conditional use. Uh, that, they need to, and, and things are not being done according to plan, then they need to come to us and we will be a partner with them and. And working with the people that are operating under that condition. That's a much longer answer than I anticipated giving to you when you asked your relatively short question, but, thank you. Any other questions for now, or, uh? Mr. Chair, I'd, if, if not, I would invite you to, uh, invite the.
The French to go ahead and make their pitch.
So are they, are they, Megan, are they? Ready to go, you think, or are they in the?
I can, yeah, hold on one second.
Okay. Under the system, we move, we move them into a panelist thing and then that's how they can interact, so.
One moment, please.
I'm seeing Lon French there.
Nice.
I don't see our video, though.
Um, one moment, please. Okay, go ahead and try your video, um, give it one second here. I have promoted both of the Lon French individuals as panelists, so you should have the capability to. Do your video.
There we are.
Alright.
I don't know why there's two of us, but.
Okay, well then let me, um, just to clean it up, let me hide the other Lon French account. Is there anyone else that will be speaking as a part of your applicant testimony?
We do have, uh, our representatives from Maul Foster and Alongi, Chem and Neil. Um, if you have any specific questions regarding engineering or site plan. Um, they are much more. Likely to have the answers you're looking for than we are.
Okay, um, then I will, um, allow them capability to talk as well. Um, and if you need to call on them to chime in, um, please do.
Thank you.
Okay, Lon and Tina. You're at bat.
Good evening, thanks for having us and thanks for your time. Um, we're Lon and Tina French from North Lincoln Sanitary. Um, and also Skinner Creek Transfer, two different companies, same owners, and, um. The, the application we have submitted to you tonight is to basically, um, do two things. Um, since the nineteen thirties, we have had a, a, a landfill, now closed landfill. And a public transfer station located on the east side of South Anderson Creek Road at three sixty-seven. Um, and in the. Early nineties, when that landfill closed, we, we cited a public transfer station at that site. About the same time that we cited the, the private transfer station, which is this application. That you're looking at tonight, and we've been operating those facilities separately for the last thirty plus years. Um, for the last probably twenty years, we have been looking at combining those two facilities for many reasons. Um, labor and, and just bringing everything down into one facility for efficiency purposes. And then, um, when the new composting program that we just started in March of twenty twenty was passed. It became very evident that we were one building short for the streams that we now collect and haul to different locations. So the first building that was built in the nineties, um, we bought the property in nineteen eighty-seven. Um, it was an auto wrecking yard and we, we started the process of, of building that transfer station in the early nineties. I believe it was completed in nineteen ninety-four and it was, um, one building for solid waste. Then we came before you in two thousand and seven, when we started curbside recycling. Because that has to be kept separate from solid waste to build the second building, which is on the east side of the first building. And, um. We put the, the recycling in there and haul that to market, now that we have a third stream that we pick up. We need another building to put that in, and so, um. Since we were going to do that, we decided to plan for not twenty twenty-two, but twenty twenty-two. Twenty forty-two, my decades, and so, um, that is why. I mean, we just basically said, if we're gonna do this, let's do it all, let's combine the two transfer stations, let's. You know, increase the operating hours, so we're not back in front of you ten years from now. Asking for increased operating hours because we don't have time to get all the trucks and trailers in and out of there. In those operating hours, and so we started looking at, at all of that and, and came up with a master plan, and that's where Maul Foster and Alongi have. Um, put in a lot of work to help us, um, come up with what I, I think you guys called Exhibit A, or we called Exhibit A and the permit. So, that's a little bit of history, that, um, the first transfer station was there in ninety-three, I think we. Proceeded any of our neighbors, the transfer station was in existence before any of our neighbors. Maybe the Wosseks owned their property, um, I know that the Hybergs and the Martins both came after the transfer station was in. Um, operational for many years. So, um, that, that is the just of what we're trying to do. By bringing the, the public transfer station down into the private transfer station. I want to make it clear that, um, one of the, just a couple little things and. Oh no, I think you did a great job on your staff report, just small, um, things. I don't think we're gonna have a traffic increase on Anderson Creek Road, now obviously at two eight eight, there will be a traffic increase. Because three sixty-seven will no longer be a facility, that will be a completely closed down facility. Um, and it's not an industrial parcel.
So is that, Tina, is that the one then across the street then, that, that up the hill that, that, cause that even, there was reference to that. By some of the opponent testimony too, right? So, alright, so I stand corrected then, that. Cause the, the traffic that would have gone up there is just gonna be basically already there, right?
It's already on Anderson Creek Road, instead of turning right, they're gonna turn left.
I get it, alright.
So we're not seeing an increase in traffic, other than the natural increase that we feel over the years of more population, but. But this facility is not going to bring any increased traffic, um, in, increasing the size of this. Um, in fact, I think it will make traffic flow better because you only have people going into one facility instead of two different facilities. And will have better access and egress, uh, at this facility than we do. On the other side, the, the other thing I wanted to point out is, um. The, the Martins asked why we couldn't just move the entire operation up on the hill. A, it's not zoned for that, it, it's timber conservation land, just like what they're on. And B, there's not enough land up there, if it were industrial and we could cite a transfer station up there, it's not a very big parcel. Most of what is up there is the closed landfill face from the thirties, at my best guess, is when that landfill was started. So that, that's not an option. Um. In two thousand and seven, um, we heard from. Uh, the Wosseks and the Hybergs, uh, and I don't think the Martins. Were, if they. I don't think they were at the last meeting, if I recall, they may have written a testimony, but. I mean, that, we heard the same complaints then, is, is there are concerns, noise, and I totally understand that. And, um, we, we are down gradient from the Hybergs on the south of us by a couple hundred feet. Um, and then the, the Martins on the north of us, we did build a large dirt berm. And then planted vegetation on top of it, rather than just doing side obscuring fencing. For the purpose of trying to obscure as much noise as possible. And then the Wosseks, um, they are on the east side of Anderson Creek from us and we, um. We planted the Leland Cypress for side obscuring and, and put a fence in there as well, so, um. We do try to, you know, keep noise down to. A minimum, but a transfer station is a noisy operation, I, I don't think that anybody is, um, going to try to deny that. And that's why they're located on industrial properties, I, um. We have changed some things, that dumping of the glass is out there now. And we make sure that that doesn't happen, even at seven o'clock, we make sure that it happens well after eight o'clock in the morning, because it's loud. Um, but the main reason for requesting the change in the operating hours. Is to pick up the full fifty-three foot trailers and get them on their way out of town, either to landfill. To the recycling facility or to the compost facility. Um, because those trailers have to be turned, sometimes the same trailer three times in one day, and so. You just have to get in there early, and if we could get in there even, you know, at, at five o'clock and. Speaking really candidly, I don't think we need to be in there at five o'clock right now, will we need to be in there at five o'clock in ten years? Likely. And so, we're asking for it now, rather than coming back for, uh, you know, a whole planning commission for an hour change in, in operating hours. But we're not going to be in there at five o'clock if we don't need to be, we don't want our employees working longer hours than they have to. But if we have to move solid waste, then it has to be moved, that it, it's not really an option to let it sit. And I don't think our neighbors want to let it sit. So we want to move it as quickly as possible. Um. Unless, I, I guess I'd probably better open it up for questions more than anything, um. I think it's a pretty straightforward, uh, application, I think Anna did a good job at. Hitting all the highlights. Oh, one last thing. That, one of the biggest reasons why, sorry, uh, one of the biggest reasons why we increased the building size, um. It's quite a bit larger than the other two buildings is, um, in twenty sixteen, uh, Georgia Pacific came to. All of the haulers in Lincoln. is in 2016, Georgia Pacific came to all of the haulers in Lincoln County and told us about this crazy idea called the Juno Project. And at the time, it quite honestly sounded like a gobstopper machine. And they were telling us they were going to get garbage from all over the Pacific Northwest and even the Midwest. And they were going to be collecting it at transfer stations and then bringing the bales to Lincoln County on flatbeds. And it was like, that doesn't make a lot of sense. And anyhow, fast forward four years and they built the gobstopper machine. And I'm sure all of you have heard about the Juno Project or read about it. But a quick 10-second idea of what it is, is you put solid waste into one of it and they are saying that they are going to be able to recover 70% of what goes in one end, that it'll be reduced to 30% solid waste. The other 70% will be collected through fiber, metal, organics, and plastics. And so now they have, GP has come to us and said, we really want your solid waste tons. And we said, great, we'd love to give them to you. And they said, but we can't have any construction or demolition material in there. And it's like, oh, okay. We don't have any space to separate out our, you know, pretensible waste from our drop boxes. And so we expanded this building so that we could do that, so that we could dump the residential garbage trucks in an area and that garbage could go to Juno versus the stuff that needs to go to the landfill in Corvallis or wherever we end up hauling in the next 20 years. But that was a big motivation to increase the size of that building and to make it safe enough for the public to be dumping there, our trucks to be dumping there, drop boxes to be dumping there, and to be able to segregate out that waste. Because if they really do hit a 70% recovery rate, that revolutionizes the solid waste industry as any of us have known it and will know it. Like, there's nothing that comes close to that. Now I'm done.
Thank you very much, Dana, Lon. What I'd like to do at this time is to ask if there's any testimony from the participants in this virtual conference that want to speak in favor of the application. Again, speaking in favor of the application, if you can raise your hand. And I'll have you introduce yourselves, your relationship to the project, whether it be location, where you live, or where you work, and your interest in it, and why you're wanting to speak in favor. I'm going to open that up to-
I'm sorry. I think Mr. Alangi is speaking on behalf of the applicant as well. And he has his hand raised.
Yes, I see his hand is raised. And I see also a sim. I'm going to kill it. Gokoa?
Yes, it looks like you are unmuted, Mr. Alangi. I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing your last name wrong.
Yeah, that's, no, that's correct.
Okay, wonderful. Are you adding information on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead then.
I just wanted to let the commission know a couple of things. One, there was an earlier statement about no changes to the stormwater. And we're actually proposing in the northeast corner a new stormwater facility. And that's going to be much larger than the existing one and be able to handle the added impermeable pavement and rooftop runoff that the facility is proposing. So it's an important aspect of the project. Right now, there's a smaller facility there and it handles the runoff from the existing area. Most of it infiltrates in that facility. So that new one is larger to be able to handle that increase. You know, we've worked on this facility with the Frenches extensively, trying to figure out how best to make it work and run smoothly and operate, you know, to the benefit of the residents there. One thing I wanted to point out too was that the existing public drop box facility I've observed before and it's it's a very difficult access. It's a very difficult area to have more than just a few residents use it at the same time. And this new facility, we're having quite a few more spaces for the public to dump. A lot better turning movement so that it's safer for the public to use. So there's going to be some important improvements on the public side of waste management for people that have to self-haul, you know, haul those, you know, garbage from the garage or that old couch. They'll be able to come in, get a much better access. They're also kept separate from the commercial traffic, which is an important item. So the Frenches have added a new access. And the importance of that is that now the facility can handle both types of traffic, both the public and their own collection trucks in a safe way so that the traffic doesn't co-mingle. And that's a really important aspect that this facility is going to offer to the public. And then any other questions for Jim and I regarding the engineering of it? We'd be happy to address as well.
Just wanted to say, Neil, thank you for correcting me because I do recall that the original application of the stormwater detention facility would be expanded. So thank you for the clarification.
You bet.
And for the record, Mr. Alangi, can you please state your name and your affiliation to the applicant?
My name is Neil Alangi. I'm a principal engineer at Mall Foster Alangi. And we're a Pacific Northwest engineering environmental consulting firm. And I reside in Clark County, Washington.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Alangi. Any other comments or testimony in favor of the application? I don't see anything. So we will cease that piece of it. And we will move to testimony that is not in favor or against the applicant. And if you'd raise your hand or somehow get our attention, we'll let you make your presentation. Again, testimony against or not in favor of the applicant?
Okay, so I see two hands raised. I will unmute you one at a time. And just because they're at the top of my list, Craig Wojcik, I will be un-muting you. And you'll be able to give your oral testimony at that time. One moment, please. And Mr. Martin, you will be after Craig. Okay. Can you, is your microphone working? Oh, perfect. There you go.
I don't see him at all.
I see. I see them. You're welcome to speak now. Yes, you're welcome to speak, Craig Wojcik.
Craig, go ahead, please.
Yes, I can hear you, but you can hear me, but you can't see me.
Correct. You can turn on your camera or just speak.
Well, I think I'll just speak. So at least I know you can hear me. So of course, we've been owner there since about 30 years ago, you know, before the facility was built. And, you know, you haven't heard me and some of the other neighbors complaining in the last 10 years because for the most part, the transfer station has been operating under the conditional use conditions, such as the ours. But as I have stated in my letter there, our principal concern is the noise. And I can tell you without a doubt that when I'm lying in the bed at 6:30 and the first trucks start to roll at 7, I think I hear the very first one roll up. And, you know, it literally will wake me up. And I don't have a problem with getting woken up at 7 o'clock. 5 o'clock is going to be like a war for me, you know. I don't think any of the other neighbors are going to want to be woken up at 5 o'clock. So I'm wondering, there's probably no way to keep a big 53-foot truck quiet if it's going to sneak out of there at 5:00 or 5:30 in the morning. But, you know, I'm lying in bed and I can hear these things idling at the gate. So that's an issue too. I hear the trucks roll up and, you know, you hear them accelerate and decelerate and the brakes and this and that. So anybody that lives in town where there's garbage service, you know that, you hear that garbage truck when it's, you know, probably 400, 500 feet down the block. And I just need to remind people that where I'm sleeping in that little house is about 200 feet from the entryway. And big trucks tend to have a deep sound. And it just sort of vibrates the walls of place. Again, I, you know, I'm accepting that it's 7:00 a.m. But 5 o'clock is, you know, that's a devastating thing if you're going to get woken up at 5 o'clock on a daily basis. So I don't know what the options are here. The only thing I can think of is maybe if you loaded that first truck up the night before and moved it to your site on 101 or something, stage it there the night before and then roll it out of there at 5:00 a.m. because, you know, there's already noise all over the place on 101 at 5:00 in the morning. So I don't know if you've ever considered anything like that or not. So I'd like to hear maybe what the response is from the Frenches on that question.
This is Council Herbage. The hearings are not to work exactly like that. So you've posed some questions, but really in our order of procedure, all of the opponents should be able to testify first. Then the applicants have the right to rebuttal. And so at that time, they can respond to your idea or your questions if they would like, and that's up to them. But we need to get through all the testimony first.
Did you have any further questions, Mr. Wojcik? Or testimony?
Yeah, I think Craig, if you've got-
No, that's-
That was it then? Because, right, this is your time to, if there are other observations or comments or questions that you want to pose that they'll answer when they do their rebuttal, there's some time for it.
You know, we hear the bottles and the containers. Okay, I mean, we do hear noise during the day. But we can tolerate that during the day. It's, my main concern is just getting woke up earlier in the morning. So I will conclude my participation with that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Wojcik. I believe Mr. Martin is the next speaker.
Yes, and let me give him the permission to speak. So one moment, please.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Martin, are you able to speak?
Hi, this is Mrs. Martin speaking.
Excellent. Wonderful. Could you please state for the record your name? And you are free to speak then.
Yes, it's Marcy Martin. And I just, I'll keep it short because I spent the time with the letters, the letter and the documents. Just would like to be sure everyone takes a look at those, those posts, most of both of our concerns. One additional concern is after the Echo Mountain fire, it brought our awareness, it heightened our awareness to where the local closest hydrants are. And I'd like to just put that in as a concern I want to look at in dry weather when things are, when you have rigs that could backfire or spark or any combustibles or anything like that. I have, being the neighbor to the north, along the entire part of that property lot, 700, you'll see it in the writing, enclosed, most of my concerns regarding water runoff, possible contaminants, noise pollution, dust pollution. And now I'm just saying, let's just look at it. Let's have conversations and look at it and give each other the time we deserve. And respectfully, stop there.
Is there anything to be added, Marcy?
Nope, I think I covered it.
Very good. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for participating. Okay, we'll move back to the Frenches. And you've heard some comments from some of your neighbors. This is your opportunity to respond.
Thank you. I heard Mr. Wosseck suggests that we fill trailers and take them to our Highway 101 property located in Lincoln City. And we have done that on occasion and we do do that in emergency situations. However, we have many, many more residents in that location than we do at this location. And it is not zoned industrial as this location is. So this location is much more, well, it's an outright use, I guess, to what the type of operation we're running there is appropriate for an industrial piece of property. So I completely understand what he's saying. And I want to reiterate that the reason we're asking for this is long-term planning and emergency times. The Echo Mountain fires was a good example of an emergency. And I actually did contact Wayne Belmont at the time, was county council, and said, you know, we need some latitude here because we've got to move a lot of material very quickly. And so, you know, in emergency situations like that, we're not just going to start showing up at 5 o'clock. I think we have a really good relationship with both our county commissioners or, I have yet to meet our new county council, sorry, Jerry. But Anno, we've had a great relationship with him. And I think it's important to point out that we have no violations of our conditional use permit. I think we had one complaint from Mr. Hyberg that we showed up at 6:57 a.m. and he took a picture of his clock and sent it in. This has been 10-plus years ago. And, you know, whether that was a driver error or his clock was wrong, I'm not sure. But we've had no other violations at all outside of our operating hours or anything. We have a DEQ permit at the site. So we are heavily regulated on our water quality, our air quality. One thing that I did want to highlight in the Martin's letter, they mentioned something about us starting to take asbestos in 2019. And I'm not sure what they're referring to, that's not accurate. We do not accept asbestos at our sites. Um, and we, I, I don't know where they got that information, but I just wanted to make sure that that was not part of the record. It's not accurate. Um. I, yeah, I, I hear you on the noise and, and I appreciate it. Oh, and the, um, the, with regards to the hydrant, we have a thirty thousand gallon. Uh, water tank on our site for water suppression. In fact, um, our employee put out a fire on Mr. Hyberg's property this summer. Um. That not using our, our water, but had, had our employee not have been there to put it out, Mr. Hyberg would have been in big trouble.
We, um, also, um. I, I'm not sure what Marcy's referring to, but she mentioned the fire hydrants. We have a fire hydrant. It's just hooked up to our thirty thousand gallon tank and so it's limited. Uh, but the city would not allow us, they, they could not. Uh, allow us to hook up even though the wastewater plant is right across the street. Uh, from us and, and the water line is right there. Um, since we're outside the city, they, they could not allow us to hook up. So.
We tried.
We tried, um, but yeah, we've got thirty thousand gallons and they are, you know, occasionally we do, we do have, we've had truck fires. And, uh, one of the, one of the ways you get rid of them is if you can get the transfer station, get them on the ground. You can spread it all out and, and it's on concrete and you can get the thing wet down and the firefighters. Follow us there in their trucks and, um, you know, we, we get it taken care of that way.
Mr. Chair, I, I. Tina's testimony made reminded me of something that I haven't, haven't brought up before, but it relates to our relationship with the transfer station and that, uh. Remember, remember you, Lon and Tina, you, you contacted me. Also during the eclipse because we, right, everybody, everybody was freaking out, wondering whether or not, well, there's gonna be gridlock and we'll never get. The garbage picked up. And so because of the special circumstances, eclipse, can we? And all of that turned out to be not a big deal, right? Because. Yeah, there was an eclipse, but Lincoln County was hardly flooded with people. But I do recall for the good of the order. You, when you had it, when you had a situation, sort of an emergency situation where, where you were looking to do something different. You did, you did interact with us and, and, and we, uh, after, uh, conferring with county council. Like many things, we, we basically declined to enforce a lot of regulations during that one or two thing because. There's no way we could have. So. Just a trip down memory lane there for a moment.
Yeah. A sad trip.
Yeah, uh, is there anything else you want to add to your testimony so far, uh, Mr. and Mrs. French?
I don't think so. I, um, I, I think that, um, Maul Foster and Alangi put together, um, great exhibits for you to see what it is that we're trying to do. I think that, um. Like, you know, this is, this is, um. A health and safety issue. I, I, I think that, um, Neil testified about the traffic situations. At the current public transfer station, um, it is not a safe driveway. It's not a safe access or egress. Um, it's very crowded up there. Um, once you get up there, it's not designed for the amount of use that it's getting today. Um. It wa, it was honestly a, a kind of a stopgap when it was built in the early nineties and I. I don't think we ever intended to be up on the hill as long as we have been. Um. And we, you know, we bought this piece of industrial property specifically because. Of it's located, you know, out away from most residential areas. Um, I know that the Martins said that they are not on timber conservation land and that. Is I, I thought that I saw both in the county. Um, when I go to the county website and in the staff report that it is ten timber conservation land, I believe the Wosicks.
Tina, I'm, I'm gonna check it right now. I've got my computer up, so I'll, I'll do while we're, while, keep talking, but I'll, uh.
The Wosicks are on a residential par, parcel. Um, that's the only neighbor that we have that is zoned residential.
Yeah, Mark, Martin's is timber conservation. And Wojcik's is timber grandfathered in timber conservation. Since it came up earlier in the discussion. On the other side, on the east side of Anderson Creek. Your facility over there is actually zoned rural residential, RR five. On the, uh, up, up where the, yeah.
They didn't care in the thirties when they started that.
Well, and it.
It was a nice slope to dump garbage onto.
It ended up staying.
I'll make you a great deal on it. Has a nice view. We actually have one of our.
When you go up there, that's for, that's for sure. But at least that's the zoning, uh.
Right.
Yeah. So for you, for you to go across the road with anything would take a zone change to. And to industrial and then you would, you would need to, and, and because Tina, what, what we all, in Lincoln County with our code. We have outside of cities, there's very little industrial ground. And each one of those require, our, our code irrespective of what's being proposed in industrial zone still needs to go through a conditional use permit. So.
Right.
That, that's why we're here tonight, even though your zoning is industrial.
Well, let's just pretend that a zoning change was possible. You can't do anything on top of a closed landfill. That is a, a state that there's nothing you can do on top of that other than look at it, I think.
I, I am seeing that it's from, from with the aerial photo, photography too, that it's substantially small. It's a smaller facility, smaller site there, the, the working site there.
Yeah, we, we've purchased some, some aprons from some of the timber companies in the past in case we were to ever have. An issue with, with sliding because it's, it's quite a steep slope. And it, it's old. And so, um, but other than that, you know, we just don't have any property. I mean, this is. It was an old wrecking yard, so it was the perfect property for. Us to locate to.
Okay. Um.
Mr. Chair, Megan, Megan's trying to get your attention.
Um, I wanted to confirm first that the applicant has finished their rebuttal.
Yes, thank you, Megan.
Thank you. Um, and then secondly, I have seen a, um, Jerry and, um. Vice Chair Bougainhagen, I have seen, um, Ken Martin's hand. Being raised and lowered a few times and I know our, um, or our testimony in opposition is over, but I wanted to know. What council thought of asking them about the raising?
About the what?
The raised hand.
The Martins, the Martins seem to be wanting to offer further information, Jerry.
Okay. And, uh, I don't have a problem if they want to offer additional information. This evening, but, uh, I think we don't, just one time and if the Frenches would like to say anything in response to what is said. I think that's appropriate. And I, I do wanna say for the record, just a comment from Tina is, uh, French is that. I am not the county council for Lincoln County. I'm an assistant council. Uh, Kristen Yule is, is the, I was council of Curry County, but that's neither here nor there.
We've yet to meet, so.
Yeah.
Hello.
Okay, so, uh, so I, I'm okay if, if, uh. If, uh, Mr. Chair, if, uh, if you want to allow, uh, some additional testimony.
Did, did I just see though that the Martins said that they're okay or let's make sure that the Mar, the Martins, if you're listening?
See that in the chat, um. I just want to verbally.
Make sure, let's make sure.
Yeah.
Marcy Martin, or did you have further information that you would like to provide?
No, thank you. I think just, um, read the letter and the documents and that would help from this point forward.
Okay.
Thank you for your supplemental.
Yeah, thank you. And I made the, the call and, and you could tell me, uh. Ms. Martin, if you feel that it's not what you were asking, but I think that you asked that a decision not be made tonight.
Correct.
Okay. So, so if we're done, uh, that is, we've had, uh, the rebuttal. I think we're to the point where, uh, the planning commission. Should decide how you want to handle that. There's been a request that the decision not be made. Tonight and you have two options. You can either leave the record open or you can continue the matter. And for purposes of our analysis, let me ask, we have staff here. Uh, do you have the date that you deem the application complete? Can you tell us when that was?
John, I think it was December, was December fourteenth?
Uh, we received the original application on, um. Sorry, I have to go back. Let me.
I have, uh, November the third.
November the third was the date we originally received the application, um.
That was the first submission, right?
It was the first submission. We received multiple, uh, submissions after that, some revisions to the, uh, to the application of the narrative. Um, the last document we received, we received on December fourteenth. Um, at that point, we determined the application to be complete because that was the last thing we submitted. So. That's, that's the date.
Yeah, that was Lon, that was your last submission, right? So.
Okay, and, and we're dealing with property that is outside of the urban growth boundary. Is that correct?
Correct.
And, and so we're looking at a hundred and fifty day period.
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
That, the hun, so, uh, some of the opposition said, uh, you know, we want to. Have this put off until some studies are done and this and that, and that. The thing is in land use. The legislature in the past has said, and it's in the statute, that. These applications need to move along and you can't just hold them up. Under, um, chapter two fifteen for this type of an application. From the time that the application is deemed complete, uh, till all appeals, if there are any, are resolved. Uh, we have a hundred and fifty days to do that and, uh, the application. Date was, uh, began, so the, the, the beginning date is December fourteenth here. So the point I'm making. Is, uh, one, these things cannot be put on hold indefinitely. But what we need to do is you can, you could, uh, the planning commission could continue this for two weeks if that works for you. Or another option is to say the hearing will be closed, but we're gonna leave the record open for written testimony. And we would allow two weeks for written testimony to come in. Another week for rebuttal on that and another week for final argument because the applicants have the burden of proof. They do have the right to have the final. Words on this, no new evidence, but final argument means the, uh, your argument that the conditional use permit should be granted for these reasons. And that you could submit something like that.
So Jerry, under option one. The, the, the real difference between the two options are. On the twenty, on January twenty-fourth, we would be doing this again, but under the one of the options. There'd be no further testimony. There would only be the submissions, any further submissions in writing.
That's right.
And, and then you would, and, and you would, and planning commissioners, you would receive them and then deliberate that night.
No, 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 timeout, timeout.
Okay.
Depends upon which way. If we're doing the, leave the record open. What that means is until the twenty-fourth, everyone, whether you're in favor or against, can submit additional written testimony. During that two-week period.
Okay.
Or, and we're not convening that. We're not convening there.
We're not convening then. Okay, thank you.
And then, and then what would happen is, is all part of due process is that. Um. Parties would have another week to rebut, no new evidence, but to rebut basically what was said before. And then, um, then. To, uh, the first week in, the first Monday in February, which is the, uh. Seventh. This, uh, on the seventh, uh, the, uh, Frenches would have the opportunity to submit in writing. Uh, what we call final argument, written final argument, just. We ask that you approve the application for these reasons and that's, that's the final step. Then after that. After that. Date on the seventh, you would reconvene, you set a date tonight if you were gonna do that. Reconvene, consider all the evidence and make a decision. If you do it the other way and you just continue the matter, there could be additional delays. Um. Because if new evidence comes up, then, then it's to be continued. But if, if you. Just continue the matter for two weeks. Um, we would, we would meet. As opposed to the other option, we would convene on that day. And on that day, anybody, it'd be like this, like this hearing, uh, we'd go through an order. And people could just testify again about what they want. Maybe they've looked at the issues again, or maybe, um. Some things have been worked out and that could be put on the record. So do you understand what I'm saying? The, the first one is, is structured. It would be that. The.
To leave the record open.
To leave the record open is, is the one where we don't meet for about. Four weeks or so, but there is an order of procedure where. Materials can be submitted on those dates that I gave. And the other is, is you just continue it. Continue it means, um. Heck, you know, anything can happen in a way, but it, it's continued for two weeks in a proceeding like tonight where, where testimony would be taken. And it's not just written testimony.
And this is, and of course, Jerry, this is a decision for the planning commission to make.
That is absolutely correct. The planning commission makes the call about what you wanna do. Either is lawful. Okay, the, the point, what we must do is not make a decision tonight and we must either continue the matter. Or leave the record open under ORS one ninety-seven, seven sixty-three, sub six.
So, Mr. Chairman, at a certain point, I would invite you to. Ask your colleagues if one of the two approaches seems to resonate more than the other.
That's what was on my mind. What is the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners? Now is your turn to speak. So let's hear what your options, you've heard the options. Uh, we're not gonna vote right now on those options, but, uh, I would entertain discussion. Uh, for or against those options. Phil, go ahead, please. You're muted, by the way.
Thank you. Uh, I would think that we should leave the record open and, um. And then have a meeting after that. Uh, record is closed. And, uh, do our final deliberations. And come to a decision at that time.
Hey.
Phil, do, do, and, and you're, uh. You're, just to, for your colleagues sake, the preference for the one over the other, is there any particular, uh?
Yeah, if, if, if there were a, a lot of people testifying, I would say, yeah, continue the hearing, but. Since basically, we've heard all the interested parties tonight. And if we leave the record open, if there's something else they wanna add into the discussion, they can present that. And then, um, uh, we can deliberate that and like you said, it, it, uh, it's, it's something like this. I think we could, I mean, I could. Deliberate tonight, but if they, if the, uh, either proponents or opponents wanna pre, present additional testimony, they'll be allowed to.
Okay. Any other comments for the commissioners on their preferences? All quiet out there.
Well, I, I could say that, um, with respect to Phil's, uh, recommendation, that has been the tradition. You know, in the past, the planning commission has generally done the, leave the record open. And I, I do wanna go over the statute again on the sub six and then at C. Um. I suggested two weeks just because one week is pretty short, okay? Uh, what the statute says is if the hearings authority leaves the record open for additional written evidence. Arguments or testimony, the record shall be left open for at least, at least seven days. And, um. And so on, and it, it goes on from there. So, uh, the suggestion would be. Uh, if you do that, leave the record open. Again, I'll, I'll go over the dates. Um. Today's the tenth, so we would say, and you might make some notes about this for purposes of emotion. The recommendation is. Is the record is left open for any party to submit something by the twenty-fourth. And then rebuttal is allowed and that's, let's say at five PM. That makes sense. Uh, then on the thirty-first. Um. The deadline for submitting rebuttal. Is the thirty-first by five PM and. Staff can instruct you how that can be done, but I'm sure you can email them a, as you have. staff can instruct you how that can be done, but I'm sure you can email them as you have communicated previously. Then the point would be that the seventh would be the day that the applicants, the Frenches, can submit their final written argument. And if it works for the planning commission, you could reconvene on the fourteenth of February. What I have is, I think it's the twenty-first is the holiday. That's the President's Day. So I think the fourteenth isn't available. They, planning staff could check against that, but that would be a possible schedule. And then when you convened on the fourteenth, you would convene, not for purposes of taking testimony, because the record will be closed. And what you will do is deliberate to reach a decision, either to approve or not to approve, and if you approve, you need to be thinking about the conditions that would, that would be part of your order, and the conditions include the hours of operation, which seems to be a matter of contention here. So you need to think about that. And if you, if you go with what Phil had recommended, then the point is, is the hearing portion would be concluded tonight. It is only written testimony that will be allowed to be submitted in accordance with the timelines I gave. And so a question came up, what's the difference between the rebuttal and the, it's the final argument. So rebuttal would be during the first two weeks, people could submit something, and if you want to submit some evidence that relates to that, or something that relates to that, that's fine. But the final argument is different. The final argument is not evidence. And that's the, the last deadline, and that's on the seventh. And what that is, is simply a statement that the applicants feel that this conditional use approval should be granted, or conditional use permit application should be granted for these reasons. That's what it is.
Jerry, because they get the last, the applicant, this is always the way it works. The applicant always gets the last word.
That's right.
Because there needs to be, at some point, somebody has to get the last word, you know, you can't like, all say something at once, right?
So that's right. And all this is in accordance with the statutes. It, it recognizes sort of a due process thing in that they have the burden of proof. It's their application. Somebody, as you said, has to be last and have the last word, and they get the last word. Really, the last word is with the planning commission, because when you convene under this, you know, whenever you convene, if it's the fourteenth, to make a decision, the point is, is that no one else can talk, you know, but you'll be, you'll be deliberating and reaching a decision.
But Jerry, all, all of these last words from here on out, it's from, from both, from the applicant and the opponent's neighbors, it's all going to be in writing.
That's right.
So the, so these, if, if we go down the road of, Mr. Chair, if, if there's a motion that takes us down the avenue of leave the record open until the twenty-fourth, then the, the steps Jerry just outlined are all going to be in writing. But then in, in what, February, potentially the fourteenth of February, the planning commission, you'll be doing the same exercise with a Zoom meeting like this. The, the Frenches will have already given their last written response, and then the record is closed, and then you will be deliberating on that without any further testimony, just to make, say, if, if we're being redundant, just want to make sure everyone understands that. Okay.
Comments from the rest of the commissioners on the proposed dates and so forth that Jerry has put out, and also the process that Anu has talked about.
Well, it's the same process, and we're, we're just making sure we're explaining it in slightly different ways, so everybody really understands it, right? Yeah.
Okay. Phil, you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Yeah.
I wanted to point that Commissioner Lambert has her hand raised.
I just wanted to say that I, I like the fourteenth idea better than the other one myself. That we meet on the fourteenth.
Okay.
Thank you, Megan, for seeing the hand.
Thank you. Yes, I missed it. Shailin, anything?
You're moot.
Okay.
I'm still a little bit confused about when we're going to meet for which decision.
The, the motion will soon be made by Phil, but you will next meet, if he makes that motion, it's just a suggestion, but you will next convene on February fourteenth at seven PM.
Okay, what about the other option to, not to, to leave the record open, but to?
Just to continue the hearing.
To continue it.
If you continued it, the recommendation is that you reconvene the hearing portion on the twenty-fourth.
And at that time, we would do our deliberations and then?
Early, what would happen, I mean, it's possible, but what would happen is you would convene, and if there's new evidence, somebody could ask that it be you know, let, record left open or continued, somebody could make that motion again, and it would have to be allowed. And, but, but it would be like an evening like this, where we would go through the order of testimony, and the applicant would go first, and everybody in favor of the application next, and then those opposed and rebuttal, you'd go through all those steps again.
So we're probably looking at around the middle of February, and in either case.
It was January twenty-fourth, Commissioner Strachan.
Yeah, yeah, I think she's saying eventually for a decision.
But by the time it all played out.
Yeah.
That's possible. That's, that's quite possible.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But I think one of the reasons, Commissioner Spalnick, right, I'm, Phil, I'm reminded of what you, when I asked you why you, you sort of were drawn to the leave the record open option, is that we don't, it, it's not like Goal eighteen where we've got, you know, literally dozens of people wanting to testify. It's, we've got a kind of contained universe here of people that care deeply about this issue, and which might let, and your point was that leaving the record open at twenty-four should accommodate that scale of a dialogue.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, I think it'd be good to see if we could have a motion and see where it goes.
Okay, this is Phil. I'll make the motion that we close the hearing tonight and leave the public written testimony open until the twenty-fourth of January, and the rebuttal open until the thirty-first of January, and reconvene on the fourteenth of February.
Okay, and added to that, on each of the first, each of the days, it'd be until five PM, just to keep that?
Correct, but until five PM.
And, and the third one is, is that the applicants would have until February seventh at five PM to submit their argument that, that you would consider.
The final argument.
Final argument.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so that's the motion. Thank you.
All right, do I hear a second?
This is.
Thank you, Scarlett. Okay.
I can do a roll call.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that everybody has, is clear what the motion is, because if you have a question, we need to explain it. Let's go ahead and do that now. Everybody's clear? You'll be voting on a motion that will take us through a submittal and rebuttal period, and a final submittal on, on the seventh of February, and our meeting will be on the fourteenth of February with our final, with our board, the commission, Board of Commissioners, a final decision date.
With your deliberation.
Yeah, deliberation.
Our deliberations and decision.
Right, after, after the argument, final argument is submitted on the seventh, yeah.
Final written argument, right.
Yep.
Okay. Megan, let's go ahead with a, a vote, please.
Okay. Chair Bogenhagen?
Yes.
Commissioner Strachan?
You're moot.
Sorry, yes.
With an M U T, not a M O O T, right?
Commissioner Spalnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Kier?
Yes.
Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm not good at that.
For the occasion, I was so ready.
Been a long day.
Okay, motion passes by unanimous vote of the attending commissioners. There is additional work we need to do tonight. And that is, you've been, you've had the opportunity to take a look at the draft minutes that were prepared for us from the August second meeting on case number zero one, zero two, zero three, L U P C dash twenty-one. This is the, the work that was done down with the coastal erosion problems and so forth. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes that needs to be dealt with?
There is, yeah.
Go.
There is, it's just a typo. It's on page six, and it says, now I just lost it, but it's on page six, and it's got the about the fourth paragraph down, and the third sentence down toward the end. You got it?
I'm taking notes, but let me, I can also pull it up.
Yeah, that's what I was doing, is somehow I managed to send it into, into the universe.
Well, thank you for reading the minutes with such scrutiny. That's wonderful.
Yeah, but it doesn't do me any good if I can't find the, the correction. It was just a, it was just a typo.
Okay, what was the correction, Commissioner Strachan, on that?
I don't know, it was the fourth paragraph down.
Well, you know, we could do, instead of tying up the rest of the night, Jerry, as long as you're comfortable with this, we could have an, we could, someone, Mr. Chair, might make a motion to accept the minutes with the, with the understanding that we'll add, that we'll, we'll, we'll check with Shailin tomorrow, and, and get the, the, get that, get whatever that typo was.
A motion to approve with the idea that you could correct a typo.
Yeah, we'll fix it.
Yeah.
Working with Shailin, we'll get.
Know where it is.
Yeah.
That's fine. We can, we can have that motion.
As long as people are comfortable with that.
I'm good with it. Would somebody please make a motion?
Were there any other corrections or edits before we made the motion?
None that I saw.
Okay, thank you.
Motion, please. Somebody raise a hand.
Although we approved the minutes of the August meeting with the correction.
Thank you. A second, please.
A second, Scarlett.
Thank you, Scarlett. Megan, you get to do the roll call again.
I'll start with Commissioner Lambert.
Yes, I approve.
Commissioner Kier?
I approve.
Commissioner Spalnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Strachan?
Shailin?
I can't hear you. Oh, okay. Yes, I approve.
Mr. Chair Bogenhagen?
Yes, I approve. Motion carries. Corrections will be made as soon as we can find who the chair was.
Commissioner Fox was not at.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologized.
All right, I, I actually wasn't at the August meeting, so I wouldn't feel capable.
Very good. So let's let the record show you abstain because you weren't part of the proceedings.
Right. Right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, motion carries.
Motion carries, and one, one quick comment, Mr. Chair, you know, actually, because what we did with Goal eighteen was, it was such a historic process that if, if, if there's any minutes packages that people might read in the future from our deliberations over the years, it would be for that, for Goal eighteen, because I, I know there are grad students and other people that are interested in, in the issue, so, so much in the issue, that, that, that might actually get read just as, as a historical document, so.
I suspect it's going to go to the Salishian folks pretty quickly. Because they're, they're having their struggles.
Well, but they'll, you know, the, the, the much more interesting issue is that all of that Goal eighteen issue is now shifted up into Tillamook County, and we don't have really time tonight to go over that, but but again, thank, thank you, thank you for, Shailin, for the, reading the minutes with, with such interest and, and scrutiny. So we, we have the minutes are passed, Mr. Chairman, right?
That is correct. And I'd like to ask the commissioners if they have any concerns that they would like to present tonight. We'll take them. I don't see any hands up or flashing of eyes, or jumping up and downs.
When will we be in person again?
I think you have to ask the, well, it's, it's the state of Oregon and the commissioner, the Board of Commissioners would make that choice about opening up the county. From my lips to God's ear, once this Omicron thing starts to, you know, works its way through or burns through, and if there isn't another variant, then then we'll be, then we'll, then we'll be happily doing in-person meetings again, but I think the, the, we've also learned how effective it can be to have these meetings electronically. So you know, the trend that people are having is to try to stay with some hybrid, you know, that we get the best of both worlds. That, that's both in the private sector, public sector, people are moving in that direction anyway, so. And, and again, Mr. Chair, we have an ongoing invitation to Judy Pelletier, when she, when we meet again in person, I'm going to make sure that we reach out to Judy and have a cake. And so either before or after the planning commission, she can join us for that night and celebrate her very, very long and outstanding contributions to our planning commission over those decades.
Absolutely.
And I, I think it's worth mentioning that for, for everybody here that doesn't know that, that Judy really encouraged Liz Fox to submit her name as, as her replacement, so that she comes highly rec, you know, Liz comes highly recommended from Judy, so I just think that's good to know. And again, Liz, very glad you've joined us.
Shailin?
Yeah, who should I send that correction to? Do I need to send it to everyone, or just to planning folks?
Megan.
If, if it's just a, if it's just a typo, then just send it to Megan.
Okay.
And, and if, if somehow there's the slightest indication that there was, there's more to it than a typo, then we'll send it to everybody so they can see it.
Okay, great, and welcome, Liz.
Yeah, welcome.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Saying no other business before this August group will adjourn. Thank you very much, Liz. Thank you for coming. Looking forward to getting a chance to meet you in person.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Bye.